And I don't know, at least for myself, I would welcome everybody to a work session of the Community Relations Committee.
Uh huh.
I don't, I don't know, this is a work session, so it's not like a regular session. Um, I don't know that I need to give the spiel, or if we really need to. We are meeting remotely under the executive orders by Governor Baker.
Uh huh.
And so, uh, this is a work session, so we don't have a public speak, and we have a general agenda that includes some, um, new year organizational things, like consideration of officers, um, uh, other, other things we could consider, materials that we've gotten from Derek Dean, materials we've gotten just from meeting with Dr. Lomax Campbell and the mayor. We do have on our general agenda that statement about Native American Heritage Month, but somehow, it seems like the way the work sessions are set up is that we don't expect to be able to vote, and we don't, there's some things that we don't expect. Um, again, um, I was just commenting that I had put in a call to the Department of Justice. I'm gonna transcribe a message I have back. From their perspective, there aren't, there really isn't a difference between a normal session and a work session, but, um, that concept must have come from somewhere, so, anyway, for the sake of conforming to how we've understood it, then, then we don't vote on things. Uh, I think that we do take note of attendance, and the way I've seen the recording, that the reason we, we don't just raise our hands is, is because usually the speaker shows on the video, and you're not seen unless you're speaking.
Oh.
So, um, unless somebody else would like to, uh, let me just, just go through who's here, the, so Margaret.
Yeah.
Yep, you're here. And Myra. Are you here?
Isn't.
Thank you. Emily?
Here.
Thank you. Gabby?
Yeah.
Good. And I'm Rebecca Passa, and I'm here, and so, we don't have Jan Norman here, and out of our six, he's the only one not here.
Uh huh.
So, um...
And also Gabby has to leave, well, we were all here, right? When Gabby said she had to leave at 6:30.
Yeah. So, it may make sense while Gabby's here, if you all agree, to consider what our meeting schedule for the, for 2022, and in addition to the fact we don't have a chair right now, and what our thoughts are on that. How do you feel about starting with that? Okay.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So, so last time Gabby, we were asking ourselves, did we want to change from Tuesday, and I feel like in a way we, most people didn't want to, but you have some conflicts on some Tuesdays at least, is that right, Gabby?
Yeah, Tuesdays in general, for a couple reasons, just end up being a busier day of the week. Um, so, I would love for a different, uh, day, but I understand also that everyone else's schedules might not align.
Right. Is there a different day maybe you'd propose that could be considered?
Um, Monday, or even Thursday.
Okay, well, so let's, uh, what do those days look like for the others of you? Mondays or Thursdays?
Not Thursday for me. I could make Monday work, but Thursdays wouldn't work.
How about you, Margaret? What's your schedule usually?
Thursdays are less good. Mondays, so-so, 'cause sometimes I'm out of town and coming and traveling on Mondays. Um, uh, you know, Tuesdays are kind of the best, but I do have some flexibility, although, you know, Thursday's not so good.
Okay. And Myra, how about you? Excuse me.
Well, I would love to say that I'm free, but that's not the case. Um, on Monday, our household has a standing appointment on Monday evenings. Um, Thursday, I'm not quite certain of, there's other households, um, appointments that we usually get to as well. Just depends on the season and what the, the household is engaged in. So currently Monday, there's a standing appointment.
Okay, so that's hard for you. Uh, yeah. Hmm. So I...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, given that we have such a small committee at this point, and that if we're going to survive, that we all need to be on board regularly, um, 'cause that's my issue, is how viable are we as a committee? With four people who come most of the time, and two people who come sometimes. And, um, and Gabby, you're one of the, you and Jan, and so, um, you know, oh, Jan's here! Hey!
Yay!
Hey, hey, hey!
Jan, today your name is Jan Madden.
You're muted.
And you're also muted, yeah. Do you need a pen? I don't, you're muted, so we can't hear you.
He's looking, he's looking.
He's looking for his, his unmute, hopefully. Yeah. Yeah. But that's great to have everybody here.
Not yet.
Not yet, because we can't hear him.
Yeah. Jan, is the button all the way on the left on the bottom? And if you click it, it should go gray, and then that would be on? Hmm.
Okay, I'm in.
Oh, yay, there we are. Very good.
Hi, Jan. I was just saying that, hi, Jan, I was just saying that I'm glad you're here, because this is the sum total of our committee, and, um, and Gabby needs to leave at 6:30. And I was just saying that my concern, which I expressed to the mayor last, two weeks ago, whatever, when she spoke with us, was that, uh, my concern is how viable a committee we actually are, when there's only six of us that remain, and you and Gabby, um, aren't here very much. So, uh, we don't have chairs, the chairs are gone, uh, we, we have lots of data, we have lots of written information, we've had lots of different helpers, but where it go again, kind of? And, um, and given that, you know, from my perspective, that people need to figure out who, how much water they're willing to carry, you know, and what you're willing to do and not do, and that's fair. I mean, I'm not, I'm very ambivalent myself, in terms of, uh, you know, just where we're going. I have no idea where we're going, but, um, but I, I would say that I think as a six-sum, that we either join forces, or we figure out who's not really available. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah.
I guess my comment...
Go ahead.
My comment to that is, um, we spoke about a little bit last week, and I had a chance to think about it, so, because we're such a small group, and have only been getting smaller, um, like some of the, the tasks require work that's, um, within our little subcommittees, like our, but, well, what do we call it? Our, um, event brother subcommittee, and so, it's, forum, there you go. Our forum. Our forum. So, being able to know, like, our, what, how can we divide up work, and, um, being that we're so small, what each person can do in addition to the meeting, because the meeting is just, I feel like it's a place where we start to, um, share out, but the bulk of the work has been done in the, um, subcommittees, or forums, whatever, we have these little work groups. So, thank, keeping that in mind, also, when, in terms of scheduling and availability.
And maybe you're saying, it's equally important as to whether there's some, subcommittee time? And as long as we can have four out of six, at least to offer reports, then we could keep going. Uh, so we were kind of talking about dates, Jan, that Tuesdays isn't, aren't ideal for Gabby, uh, and it seems like there's at least one person for whom Monday isn't ideal, Thursday isn't ideal. I didn't ask about Wednesday. Is Wednesday an impossibility?
I think with Wednesday, we just probably would want to, if we do decide on Wednesday, would be the Wednesday that doesn't fall on a city council meeting.
Uh huh.
Just because I can, I, I don't know if it's a good idea to put our meeting at the same time as a big, larger city council meeting, especially since there might be times when we want to attend those.
Yeah.
But we can do alternate Wednesdays.
Well, I think we started off with once a month meeting also, rather than, uh, I mean, I think we felt like we had a lot to do, we wanted to take advantage of trainings, so we did twice a month, but that might be another question, whether we think it's, it's more reasonable to do twice a month rather than once a month.
I think, I mean, as Myra was saying, like, a lot, the bulk of the work sort of has to be done in the subcommittees, so I would propose that we, as a big group, only meet once a week, once a month.
Okay.
And then, subcommittees, you know, meet when they can.
Okay. So if it's once a month, can people do a Wednesday if we choose the correct Wednesday?
I can do one.
Or is, is that better than Tuesday? Because Tuesdays are always hard for you, Gabby. And it, was that a, yeah, I guess that's a nod from you, Jan. How are the rest of you with the Wednesday?
I'm good with a Wednesday. I'd have to switch one person. It wouldn't work well. Same time?
Uh huh. At 6:00 P.M.? And I guess I could go ahead and take a look and see when the city council is meeting.
I think they meet once a month, right?
That they meet twice a month?
I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, well, right now, Wednesdays don't work, 'cause I was standing, uh, meeting with another family, but I can change that, probably, I think. I'd have to ask them.
It's, it's not the most ideal for me to, typical, starting in the spring. Like I said, it depends on what our household is up to, and Wednesday typically is swim night, and that usually starts at 6:00 P.M. until 7:30, and it's weekly.
I see. So you're at the pool.
You can't do it.
Yes, I'll be at the Y.
Well, you know, I didn't ask about Friday night. Usually people don't like, no, no, they don't like Friday nights, and they don't like weekend nights. You don't like Sunday night, right? No.
No, no.
Uh, let me see. City Council kind of isn't the kind of normal board and committee. Let me see if I can get to the agenda place, and maybe I can find it there. But, yeah...
Gabby, Gabby is every Tuesday, not good?
Um, most aren't. Like, I would have, it would just change from month to month.
It changes.
So, yeah, but, it, Tuesdays like the one day that's really not good for me.
Yeah. Well, if we took it in baby...
A Tuesday's not good for you? 'Cause you're, yeah, you're going like this, is, a Tuesday's bad for you also, Jan?
You know, Tuesdays are a little tougher. I mean, I, I can do it, 'cause I see people, and, you know, I go back to back, and then, you know, Tuesday gets to be a really long night. Um, so...
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, the six o'clock time I've, I've mapped out, but I could rearrange for a Wednesday.
Well...
I could rearrange for a Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
Yeah.
So Mondays are pretty tough too, right?
Uh, let's see, Monday was bad.
Myra couldn't do Monday.
Oh, okay.
Well, we can sweeten the deal if we change it to a different day, uh, either Gabby or, or Jan could be the chair. We can definitely sweeten the deal.
Gabby, she seems extremely organized.
I was gonna say...
She has that young energy.
Yeah. So I'm looking at city council for whatever that's worth. I agree, it looks like they are twice a month, and it looks like, what? The first and third Wednesdays they do. So I suppose what we're saying is that if we picked a Wednesday, then we want to avoid the first and third.
Myra, when does Wednesday's season start?
Actually, I'm at capacity, so I'm not doing swim at the moment. We are doing basketball.
Oh, right.
So, then we'll come swim and soccer.
Is basketball on Wednesday?
I, funny enough, this week they're on Monday nights, so I don't know what's happening. But on Monday, we have like Monday and guitar, but I don't want to give away my kid's schedule on TV. Anyway, we've got a lot going on in any given night.
Yeah, all right. Uh, well, do you think during, it, would it be fair during a, a time period prior to swimming beginning, that, you're saying it, things are busy with family anyway, so are Tuesday or Wednesday kind of equal for you up until the swim?
No, I've kept Tuesday open.
Yeah.
For the purpose of this meeting. So everything that I've scheduled has been around keeping a Tuesday open. However, it may be that I could make a Monday, I, I honestly don't know, and I'm soon to be a household of one adult again, so it's gonna be quite tough.
Yeah, so, so the other adult is traveling, is that for a long time? You don't know? I hope that goes well.
So perhaps we can do a Monday or a Tuesday. I'm not certain about, uh, availability on Mondays, because things are flexible. In fact, let me look on my schedule.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
So if we look short term, and we look at February, I don't know if we would want another meeting in January, this being a work session? I know, so if we thought, oh, we need a regular meeting in January, maybe that would have typically been the 25th, if we look at February, then, um, and... I didn't write it down, Gabby, as to whether you thought Monday was doable anyway.
Uh, I can do Mondays.
You can do Mondays. And Mondays are so-so for, for Margaret?
No, well, sometimes I'm traveling, yes. Sometimes I'm traveling on Mondays. Uh, but, you know, the issue is, is that I, you know, I can, I can potentially be flat, flexible around certain things, um, especially if it's a once a month meeting, and then if we may have subgroups, you know, I can, we can meet another time, or something like that. Uh, however, you know, I don't have kids and, uh, extracurricular activities, et cetera, that I have to, you know, that's, so, you know, uh, this is kind of how we're stymied, I think, here we can't figure out how to, when to meet.
Yeah.
And four of us can meet on Tuesdays, and two of us can't really meet on Tuesdays, it's not a preferred day, and, and we've been meeting without Gabby and Jan a lot. Um, so, I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't have the solution either. I have more flexibility than certainly Myra, and, um, and she's checking her schedule, so we'll see. So Emily, when was the subgroup that you were part of? When were you all meeting?
We were meeting on the weekends.
You were meeting on the weekends?
Uh huh.
'Cause you work full-time.
Yeah, and, and our other nights were always full, so we would just try and meet on, often Sunday afternoons, but, but, you know, yeah, we would wiggle around for when we could do it, you know?
Well... Yeah. And that was, that was you, Emily and Myra, and was that also Jan on your subcommittee? I'm trying to remember the forum subcommittee.
Yeah, it was, it was three of us, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the most recent iteration of it, yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate your donating some weekend time for that.
How is it looking, Myra?
I'm just looking now.
Great.
See if there's some regularity. Okay, looks like we'll be busy on Monday and Fridays and Saturdays until March, March, okay, apparently up until, as far as it goes, is March 18th. From 7:30, yeah, starting from 7:30.
So, that's Mondays. How's Wednesday for you? Did you say Myra already?
Uh, no, I didn't, I, I don't have things scheduled for Wednesday on, on Wednesday yet, but that is a typical day that I'm, will be busy, like, starting in a few months.
Well, why don't, why don't we pick a Tuesday in February that Gabby could make, and then in Wednesday, in March, we could do the Monday at the end of the month, when Myra's available, maybe?
Well, maybe what you meant, because Tuesdays are all hard for Gabby, so what if we pick a, a Wednesday that everybody can make until, until that's no longer good for Myra? See, I think Myra's saying that right now you're seeing some free Wednesdays, right? But eventually, that'll be a problem.
Yes.
So, you all, um, would we like our next regular meeting in March? This being a work session, would we want anything sooner rather than later, or do you want to go to say, the second Wednesday in March?
Why are, why are we meeting in February?
Why, why am I skipping February? That is a good question. I didn't mean to skip February, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at a calendar where I'm scrolling, and I scrolled to the bar. Uh, if we want to avoid city council, then we might want to pick February 9th, for example.
I actually don't think I can make February 9th. I can probably, well, I would probably put us on the 23rd, for me.
Does anybody want to consider a second meeting? Because to have, I'm sorry about that, uh, a second meeting in January, because this is a work session, and make that January 26th? I mean, that's perhaps a possibility.
It's possible.
Or going later in February.
Can you say that one more time? I was checking my calendar. Can you say that?
I was just thinking, because this is a work session, if we wanted a sooner regular meeting, then maybe we could consider, for example, Wednesday, January 26th, and that's even though that's my birthday, but I don't care. Uh, or we could pick, since February 9th isn't good for Margaret, we could consider the 23rd, and that's avoiding city council meetings.
Either of those dates work for me.
I'm sorry, they do or they don't? They do, they do.
Did you say, did you say January 26th, or January, no, 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 no.
Yeah, she said January 26th and February 26th.
Oh, February 23rd.
Right.
Okay.
See, February 9th didn't seem to be good for Margaret.
No, it isn't. I mean, I, I don't have to be at that meeting, but that one, I don't think the 9th is, um, yeah, I'm having company arrive that day, and, uh...
Yeah, those work for me.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
They also work for me. There, it looks like they're both Wednesdays, and I haven't, I don't have anything scheduled.
Okay.
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 So I have to run, but I'm just going to go ahead and block off both of those dates on my calendar, and then I'll just wait for an email to see which one everyone decided worked for everyone. Does that work?
That sounds great. I mean, I might, I might even propose both the 26th of January, and the next one being the 23rd of February, but yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch. Thank you for joining, Gabby. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Gabby.
Bye.
Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye.
So, if people are agreeable, and I think maybe in terms of moving forward and being able to vote, and if we're still gonna consider a statement for Native American Heritage Month, you know, having a sooner meeting on January 26th may be a good idea, and then February 23rd is about a month from there? We could then look at March at that time, if that's better to think about?
We might need to go back to Tuesdays, is that what we're saying, or we don't know? I mean, it sounds like Gabby can never make Tuesdays.
Right.
I, I think we should cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, and maybe check, but we'll, we'll be checking with you, Myra, on when swimming's starting. And, uh, and I guess it's, it's hard, you know? And, uh, and I guess it's, it's hard, you know? It's hard because we want everybody there. And if we had to choose between what's not good for somebody, that's kinda tough, but,
Quite tough.
But, but as long as we have quorums, we can still have subcommittees. And it could be that even if a member can't make most of the regular meetings, they can still do subcommittee work.
Right.
And, uh, you know? And as we make friends, I mean, I think outreach, for example, to the press, I think, I think the mayor had in mind that we're looking for more committee members.
Well, she said that there was somebody in the pipeline. There was somebody's name. I think it was a man's name that, um, that she was talking with, working, something.
Yes, she, she definitely said there was somebody in the pipeline.
Yeah.
And then towards the end of her presentation, when we were asking her questions, we were rather saying to her, it would be great to have more members.
Right.
Oh, yeah, here it is in what, in the statement that she sent us.
Yeah, yeah. So she was keeping the committee with 11, let's say, slots. And we don't, obviously, we only have six of them filled. Uh, with a, what looks like a potential or probable seventh, so that's good. And then moving forward, um, you know, we would welcome more, the, you have to be an East Hampton resident to be in the committee, but we are welcoming more.
I spoke with a woman, I wanna say, a couple of weeks ago. It was actually right before White Rock closed. Um, she came in, she's part of something parent committee. Um, it's, it's not like PTA, it's, it's something a little bit different. More like a liaison. And, um, I was telling her a little bit about CRC, and she said she would be interested, so.
Great.
Told her, and she would just have to check in, um, I guess through the mayor's office.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's, there is an application form and that goes to the mayor. So hopefully if she checks in with the mayor's office, then they'll just give her the form and she can.
Okay.
So Jan, will you get back to her?
I sure will. Like I said, I wanted to bring it up here first and,
Sure, that's great.
I have her email. So, I will email her.
That sounds great. And if that's a connection with the, the schools and that part of our population, that's great. That's great. Okay. Uh, so, so, um, so are we on board for those two meetings, Feb, uh, January 26th, February 23rd? Does that sound like a go?
I really don't.
Wonderful. Okay. All right. So on easy things to choose, um, do you have, uh, thoughts about a chairperson? You have some thoughts, Emily?
Mm-hmm, I do.
I'd be pleased to have them.
Doesn't look good for you. I would duck Rebecca.
No, um, I actually wanted to propose that, um, Myra and I be co-chairs. And Rebecca, keep doing secretary work unless you really don't like it. You know, but, and you've done such a great job. And I know I don't have time to do the secretary work that you do. Um, not that I have a whole ton of time to do chairman work, but Myra and I talked about it this weekend and, um, we thought that we might be able to do it together. Yeah.
That'd be great.
That sounds like a fabulous idea. So, uh, again, we've, we've understood that work sessions don't allow us to vote here, but at least with the discussion, then we could, um, and let me say this. Typically, I've, I've tried to get the ball rolling by proposing agendas to co-chairs. I might take the liberty then, if you're, if everybody seems agreeable, um, then I'll propose an agenda to you too. And, uh, but it would have an election of officers as a, as a first thing.
Yeah. So, and, and I don't wanna be the one speaking here. I'm aware that I'm the white person speaking. So Myra, do you wanna talk about this a little bit?
I, I certainly can. Um, I certainly can. So, in the, in, in discussion, I've always felt like our, our committee has, you know, lots of potential. We still do. Our, the committee has lots of potential. And, um, and I was just thinking in terms of visioning and, and leadership and the potential ways forward. Although I have a busy schedule, I don't mind taking, rather, I would, welcome that opportunity. But knowing that my schedule is sometimes busy, having another member that would be co-chairing, um, would be helpful. So in the event that there's, um, other work to be done or a missed meeting, it can still happen with two people sharing the position. In addition to, um, in addition to not being on the same, well, not having the same end of term, I think would also be helpful because my term will now end before yours.
That's true.
That's true, yeah.
So those are just some things to think about. Of course, everyone on the committee brings their own experience and voice, so I will be just one, but hopefully one that, um, brings some energy and some, some forward motion that we keep seeking.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I think, you know, thank you both for talking about it.
Yes, indeed.
Um, I think it's a good combination for sure. No, I think co-chairs is a good model and, um, and you two having worked together already, et cetera. I think that sounds great.
So I'm sure you'd like some practice. So you might have the agenda in front of you.
Wait, let me see. I actually do have the agenda in front of me. Boy, I would need a lot of practice. I have since, since, um, having to work remotely, have learned how to, you know, split windows. That's been my biggest skill.
Yeah, looking at you things at the same time, yes. Yes, good. Yeah, my, my own hesitancy is even that I'm not a vice chair. So here I was presuming to say things, but I'm, I'm more than happy to, to, to give you some practice, so.
And I'm also okay with you taking steps forward. I think we're just having, just wasn't.
So, so the agenda is pretty generalized. So, uh, it starts off, I say, committee at organization, including committee officers. I personally, I mean, number two is next meeting date. I kinda bumped that up because Gabby was gonna have to leave. Follow-up discussions, if any, on training, you know, which is all manner of training. I put it all in there. And, um, and so I had the pleasure of conferring with Derek Dean, as I think you know, from the draft report that we received. And I was glad to have that to remind myself, which is towards the bottom of the report, you know, the, the three points we were focused on. And now we have the input from the mayor with some sense of what she's focused on. We have a different committee configuration. I don't know if we would want to, to re-vote or reconsider on any of these points, but, um.
Um, wait, on which points? The action steps or the?
The action steps.
Well, I think there, there are more specific action steps towards the very end of the draft plan of action. But this was under the umbrella of those three, um, like, how do I say? They're action, but they're more generalized, like engage residents in businesses, in programs, events, projects, that's number one. I think that was on our top list. And it sounds like that, from how I understood what the mayor said, it sounds like the $10,000 allocation is for that. It's, it's programs, I mean, I'm thinking forum, programs, events, projects. Even the foster awareness, that's number two. To foster awareness, that's still kind of that, could be within the forum because what we're hoping to do with a forum, you can correct me, but offer some educations. I, I see your hand, Margaret.
Well, one of the things, though, that you mentioned, Myra, at the end of our last meeting, after the mayor said, you know, that she really saw us as, as being recipients of data, the lead recipient of data. So we would be in a, uh, assessing or a, uh, yeah, we would be in a, in an assessing role. And what we had talked about was really being much more in an educational role and a facilitating role. So, I mean, I was interested by what the mayor said, but, uh, we had decided on a bunch of things that did not have to do with assessment and giving feedback, basically reviewing research, reviewing data. So, I mean, I like that idea. I think that we might do really well at that. Because it's about receiving stuff versus us putting out. And I think there's certain wills we do not need to reinvent in East Hampton. For example, I've said this a number of times, but the undoing racism, I don't know that our forum, uh, would be useful in comparison to that. I think that has the
That was really good.
Ultimate usefulness. It has the ultimate usefulness for me. And I would suggest it for our, for our committee and for our community, but.
Well, I mean, unless, unless our forum is undoing racism, is that exact?
Exactly. And that would be perfect, that would be fabulous.
Right.
That would be fabulous. But, um, you know, but I, I also think that, I know that when we were coming up with these, uh, steps, the things that I was interested in were not so much what we ended up choosing. I just kind of, you know, didn't wanna block what we were doing because if we were gonna, if most of us wanted to do X, I was into doing X also. But I, uh, the, this kind of more of an assessing role. And, um, you know, but that means that we need to reconsider that and make it, you know, and then come up, make a decision that that's also what we wanna do. That we like the mayor's idea or we don't. And then there's money to go along with the mayor's ideas or not. I mean, they can go along for our ideas and money. But, um, you know, I.
Yeah, so one thought, or at least one thought I had, and I think it might have been suggested by Derek, but our configuration is a little bit different now. So it might be worth voting on some of these points again. Uh, another thing is when the mayor was talking about the receipt of reports, she was talking about supporting that with staff. And I think that makes a difference. You know, that if there is staff support, and, and she seemed to suggest maybe helping us, let's say, write our responses. I mean, I'm wondering with staff support, if that staff person is receiving data, receiving reports, that person perhaps could be called on to summarize it for us, which would really help relieve some of the tediousness of, of some of that. So I'm thinking, especially when, when there was that staff support, that, um, that could, that could be a piece that we're interested in.
Well, given that our, given that it's just us on the call right, uh, right now, I think it, oh, my computer's opened something. I, I don't know, I, I suppose revoting on it would be a, a first step. I, I kind of feel as though maybe like to move forward. We don't wanna pivot before we get started, um, and make a quick step. But if there's different voices or, you know, priorities, then perhaps we can rehash that in, in terms of, of a vote so that everyone has a voice. But my inner gut is saying, go with what we, what we've worked on, which was taking the role of being a facilitatory group initially with our own, with our own skill set. And then moving toward that advisory piece because that does require such, you know, specific skill sets. Even though there may be someone in the pipeline, like, it seems like a future ambition once that is in, in the pipeline, but.
Well, once we have the staff, right?
Pardon?
Right now, we don't have the staff support. So it might be that this is not something for right now. We're gonna, we're gonna look and see that backed up with the promised staff support.
Yeah, so like with a clause, given that there's support, we can consider, consider in that action plan. I, I haven't read everything over cause, you know, it was recently received. And I don't have that many windows. Too many times, not that many windows.
You know, I think for me was the, uh, mayor's, uh, pledge group had a lot of the, um, evaluative role. You know, and so when it came to our voting with the work we do with Derek, I voted on the evaluative role. And, um, but that wasn't what got the most votes, kind of thing. So, yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that would be a good idea to just start with one or something and, get that off the ground.
So we could stay, we still, we had these top three, engage residents, foster awareness, and list cooperation of, of other agencies, groups, organizations. I mean, we could still be focused on those and our action plans. And then once there is staff, and of course, we're looking at new membership, at least one new. And so as that happens, we could then, down the line.
Right. Yeah, I, I see those three as something that's actionable. As we were speaking of, like, having, in a next step was creating some relationships with the existing organizations that were already, um, active and have memberships and are currently doing things, like the Commission on Disability, or I think one, another one that was mentioned, maybe it's mayor, or somewhere that I heard it, was like the Healthy Youth Coalition, et cetera, of like having our members, you know, regularly attend or get to know what they're, they're doing. And that seems actionable. Like, there could be someone who might want to have a specific group to engage with. I feel like, yeah. Right? Yeah, the Healthy Youth Coalition.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to think that we could start, you know, volunteering, um, to attend some of those other organizational, organizations meetings. Um, and if we're given the opportunity to introduce ourselves as being from the CRC and we're there to help learn what's going on with them. And then also, like, um, I, I totally understand Margaret's interest in the, um, you know, data evaluation or data, whatever, um, because it's, it's tangible, you know? And, and it does, it does speak a little bit more directly to undoing racism, I suppose we could say. At least seeing it. And so there could be a subcommittee of, you know, our committee as we grow a little bit, hopefully in the next year, that several people, and then if we do hire somebody to help, then, you know, there could be three people working on that and then coming back to the monthly meetings saying what they have found and, and what they might recommend, our recommendation be about it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Right, and some other work, um, that I feel is still left undone, that we did mention was like having our, I keep using the word bylaws, but that wasn't the word that Derek used. In terms of like processes within the group, in terms of voting, is it majority? Is it consensus? Is it, um? How, I've kind of forgotten some of the language that we used when we were working on that strategy, but I still think that still needs to be done, like general descriptions of roles of office, general description. And also, we were speaking about like public speak and like our committee's rules, like that work still needs to be done. And there was something else that came to mind, but now I've forgotten. Yeah, having that groundwork as well. As perhaps another subcommittee that meets in the near future.
Right. Yeah, Rebecca and Margaret and Jan, you were here, you've been here since the beginning. You know, did we ever choose how decisions would be made? Was it simply majority? Was it?
I think it was majority.
Right.
But I might say, I have a memory, I think maybe what you're saying, Myra, I do think Derek had suggested that we have our own bylaws, and I do think we did not or we have not created that. I don't even remember whether we made any attempt to have a subcommittee on that yet. It might be we wanted our training to be complete. So maybe we'd like a bylaw subcommittee. And I mean, I think we've just gone on the default of the majority vote, which is what people expect, and maybe, you know, and from time to time, Deb even like referred to me on insisting on roll call votes or whatever, but it could be in there. My, again, I feel like I had, my understanding of the whole online COVID thing is that everything had to be roll call vote, but, but we could, we could clarify anything like that. I might say about public speak, and we can discuss this, but, but sometimes there was cross-talk, maybe where it was, would have been more advisable just to let the person speak. You know, we're all in a, whether we like it or not, this role is rather a public role. So if somebody comes in and they have an issue because one of us said something, and I think really it was me, so I tried to own it. But I didn't start the cross-talk, and it would have been just fine to let the person talk, even if they're criticizing what I said. That's fine, because I feel like in my role, I'm gonna listen. You know, I can screw up and I'll apologize, but, you know, let's let the person say that. I just, I would encourage everybody to, let's say, not take things personally. I think that's where we can get into those challenges, right? I mean, not everybody's gonna love the committee, not everybody's gonna love it if I stick my foot in my mouth, but it's kind of a part of the being here, and if we at least let people come and share their thoughts, that would be good, especially if they could feel safe and comfortable to feel, to share their thoughts. So even if they're gonna criticize me because I didn't say it well or whatever, that's fine. So it might be good to clarify, you know, in public speak, to let them, to let them say what it is, whether they're right or wrong, or whether it's gonna hurt somebody. You know what I'm saying?
Do we, do we cut them off? Do we have a minute, a minute limit?
Something like that.
I do think there should be a time limit. I'm not sure if, we might want to look at city council, because I do think they have a time li, I think it's more than a minute. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I would say they allow for, well, from what I've noticed, they've allowed for three minutes. And some meetings are more flexible than, than others, like in full council meetings, I've noticed that it's kept to three minutes. And the other component, I think, is also like the medium of message. If we have, I just remember a particular case of where it was unprecedented, where someone had a video submission, like via YouTube. Is that something that this committee has allowed? Or what are the acceptable modes? And then also, what's legal? I'm not sure if it's legal to not allow someone to have a
Yes, I remember, I remember that one, Myra, and we did have that, and we didn't know what to do. I mean, it was like, oh, I mean, it just happened. It was, I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, we didn't know what to do. You know, I am still intending to share these remarks I have from the Attorney General. Again, my sense is that, and I think it falls on the chair, it's really on the chair to allow someone to speak or not. And the law really does not, as I understand from this message, law doesn't require public speak. It is recommended. So I feel like if we don't want to accept a video submission, I think that's the prerogative of the chair, because it's, the chair has that prerogative to not, to allow or not allow. But anyway, I'm intending to share what I have with you. I just, it's something audio, so I wanted to type it out, and I just haven't done it yet.
Well, it seems, Rebecca, that you might be an excellent addition to that subcommittee.
Oh, I'd be happy to be on a bylaw sub. Yeah. Does anybody else want to do?
Who else is gonna be on it? You're gonna, I could be, I could be on that, I mean.
Okay, great. All right, so
Myra, wait, Myra, did you say you wanted to be on it?
I, you know what, I feel like I should wait, because there might be lots of other things to be involved in.
You know, I think Myra's pretty busy. We would love to have you, Myra. But you're, but if you're, you're still on the forum subcommittee.
Yes.
And, and maybe the, you know, I don't know your thoughts now, but I think, I think some of us are thinking, gee, if our forum subcommittee can take advantage of undoing racism, and even if you're, even if we're just helping support that, even if you're, say, finding out, okay, what's the mayor's next step, what's the timing, when's the next training, when's the, because I feel like a lot of times, we don't even know.
Right.
So if you can spearhead making sure we're updated, that'd be great.
Right, and we can finance it, because we have $10,000 to pay, to spend before July 1st.
I think it's budgeted from the, from the mayor, that undoing racism, all right.
Also, yeah, we don't even have to use ours.
Right. Maybe the question is, do we want to use any of these funds to support further attendance? Or maybe you can see, again, some of the facts are interesting, because I think she was requiring city staff to attend, and it, maybe there are still a couple of city staff that haven't attended. But let's say beyond city staff, into the regular community, does that a budget include that? Do, should we try to supplement? Should we, she was trying to say, okay, what is it? $540 per person.
Right.
And it would be great to have a waiting list, because if people cancel at the last minute, then that's a drag. But if you folks in the subcommittee can find out as much as possible about what's, you know, timing and those kind of, is this, is the city's sign-up only covering a certain range, and who can we include, can we invite folks, you know?
Right, and I think that would also, it would be useful to look at the different organizations in the, in East Hampton that might be, we might approach to say, we would like somebody from your, your, your organization and somebody in administration or management to attend this. You know, pick your person, you know, kind of thing. So you might invite somebody from the schools, somebody from, I don't know, Treehouse, somebody from, I don't know, some other organization. Excuse?
Clergy.
Yes, clergy, great.
And you know, among our action steps, among our action steps is to begin outreach, and there were, so on the, on the document Derek Dean just provided, Plan of Action. Way down, yes.
Before you go on to that, can I just go back a little bit on what we're discussing?
Sure, I just wanted to throw out Chamber of Commerce. Well, I felt like this was relevant, because when it gets to the initial listing of organizations to contact, among them is the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, and they might, I mean, there may be people in the business community. And one thing about undoing racism is it helps employers be fair to employees, if you know what I mean. So it would, I just think there are a lot of, whether it's clergy, that's a good one, business community, that's where I'm thinking, Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
And I'm just thinking, this action plan that we have is, is good, so I encourage everybody to review it, but
You know, when you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, I forget the woman's name, who, she's one of the big people who works there, and she has always stated that, you know, if things are coming up like this, whether with through the schools, which, or this, to contact her, and then she could see how she could be helpful to us. And the other thing that I was gonna bring up, and it could or could not, you know, take a certain amount of funds, but one of the things I always think about is with CRC, how many people really know about CRC? You know, and, you know, we have a, you know, most of the many time I move somewhere, I always use whatever media was available, sort of in an idea of what's going on within a community. And one of the things, when I moved here, was I found the, what's it called, Channel 5. And I saw the certain things that were coming up, whether it was like the Polish dance, you know, what was going on in Hunter Fishman's Club, what was going on with the, there was all kinds of information. And I just always think that, whether through newspaper, our local community access, what we put out there for people to get more knowledge of CRC and what CRC is, what our mission is. The other thing is, we have this really nice logo, you know, CRC, but it's only on paper. It's not on any clothing. It's not on any sign anywhere. So, you know, I, I've often thought, you know, as far as to be in the people's eyes, because this is even saying like, what is this CRC? And for people to, you know, oftentimes will then begin, some, some will look on their own. So I don't know what any of you have, think about those types of things.
I think it's a great idea, that it's visible, especially, you know, we had some discussion about promoting the CRC, as well as just some in community, like engagement in terms of perhaps making a video that's posted about, about the group, also about being present at the Winterfest. And then one idea that has kind of rattled through my mind that I shared, is that, you know, the CRC kind of looks like a button. So if we're at an event and we want to be identifiable, we could like put on a little button.
Right.
That's my Angelo that going on.
Yes, it is.
So it doesn't have to be a T-shirt, but for any weather, and I think that's pretty low cost, that maybe we could be one of our first things that we spend, so that
I found that button too.
Cute, you know?
Good idea.
Those were just some buttons.
State Trooper didn't give me a ticket once, because I had a button.
Wow.
My son was an older guy, you know, playing hockey for his nana duck, and his kid had just started, so he said, "Oh, really? Just go."
Oh, that's gotta be in our data. How many times do they do that, and are they fair?
That button, that's my problem, CRC.
We're gonna put buttons on everybody.
Use your powers for good. Yeah. Oh, wow, yeah. So anyway, yeah, so I think there's a lot, a lot of stuff for us to plan, like liaisons, and liaisons to whom, and for outreach.
Yeah, so that seems like something we should do at some point, is look at the lists of organizations that we want to do outreach to or do like connecting to. And then people choose what one they commit to. Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna do that now or next.
As you find out, I'm sorry. Well, I was, as you find out, or as we find out about undoing racism, that's, that's an excellent reason to reach out to the, an organization, introduce ourselves. And I'd like to invite you and your folks to, or, or maybe we'll have limited numbers, but we could say, we'd like to invite five of your people to this training. So I didn't mean to cut you off, though, Myra.
I was just thinking that as we come up, like with the list of names, also thinking of when they typically meet. I know one of the committees, their, their meeting is during a weekday, like during my working hours, although I'd be most interested, so it wouldn't be a good match. But maybe we could write, like, when do they typically meet, who, who their contact is.
And I have daytime time. So
I wish that to be me.
I know.
I used to run a daycare, I started a daycare for 14-month-olds to six-year-olds, and all I used to dream about was going to lunch with adults. That is now over, of course. But, you know, having daytime time, that you could even do something. But I do have daytime time.
I know. Yeah. I know, I never get personal calls made during the day. I'll go to work saying, "Oh, I have to call that person, I have to call that person, I have to call that doctor," or whatever, and then the whole day goes, goes by, and then it's 5:30, I'm like, "Ah, forgot to call." Well, I was gonna offer to contact the Chamber of Commerce, because I met a woman who was one of the leads at the Chamber of Commerce, and I don't remember her name, but I can find out her name.
Like glasses with
Yeah, she's very fashionable.
Like high, kind of high fashion.
Yeah, high fashion, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, 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 fancy glasses, exactly, yeah. So I, unless you want to do it, Jan, do you want, do you want to do that one?
Either way, I mean, you call, like, we can like, you know, do a blast.
Yeah, okay.
So there's, I just did a search, I do these things. There is an executive director, Mo Beliveau, short, short hair, like short silver hair. The other one, Karen Wasson, has more curly hair, per head.
This one's short.
So maybe it's Mo Beliveau.
And I guess my question is, before a call to them, what exactly do we want?
Nothing yet.
See, I, I'm, you know, because I'm
We'd like to build a relationship.
Yes, well, so from the training, we, we are starting to want relationship, we're, so we're the Community Relations Committee, we are looking to
We're the only.
We are looking to enhance, improve, promote good relations in East Hampton, and we're touching base with other folks in the community, and, you know, what do you do? Is there a possibility of working together on, on community education? But you see, now, if we know, if we know whether or not they can be invited to something like undoing racism, that's even better, right?
So I think it would probably be more useful for us to have a list, create the list, where obviously, you know, this woman that you've been talking about, she's definitely on this list. But once we, and, and actually even have a script almost, of what we're inviting people to, that we, you know, whether I'm kind of saying it to so-and-so, or you, or whatever, that we have something that we want to say.
Right, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that would be a Yeah, I think that would be a little bit more organized and a little bit more of a, that would be more of a blast.
Right.
For each of us to take three people, three organizations, and say, this is what we're up to, or even through email, I don't even know, but just to start to connect.
Yeah. Well, and, and it would, so it would be what we're up to, and we'd like to know about them too. I think part of what Derek was saying is, is if, if XYZ came up, who, who would we call? So in a way, we're learning about them too.
Well, that's how you make friends.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so in terms of Chamber of Commerce, if we got to the place where we wanted to invite the attention of the business community to something, is that something the Chamber of Commerce can assist us with, or, you know, how, how do they do things?
So, do we want to come up with a?
A script now? Right.
Now, yeah, I mean.
I know, so we don't delay anymore? I know.
Now, what about a list, well, before we come up with the script, why don't we come up with the list of people we want to contact? We only have the Chamber of Commerce at this moment, you know?
Way back when Derek said, when Derek said, get a list, did you all receive my, like, overly lengthy list of, of whoever I could think of, whether they were in East Hampton or not?
That was, yeah, a while ago.
I, I could pare it, if you want to start with, with what's within East Hampton, I could pare that down.
Right, it might make it manageable, so that we can, we can each maybe take.
You know, I, I was thinking of organizations that do interesting things. So for example, Sudbury has like a group for, for social, race friendships and social action, or whatever it is. And if, 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 for example, I reached out to them, it would probably be to see how, how they've done things, or, you know, but, but again, that's in Sudbury. So they were on my list just because they're doing something that maybe could be learned from, right? But, but other groups, the East Hampton groups, that's for making the relationship within East Hampton that we want to make. And, but further input, I, I haven't received further input, and one thing that was pointed out is I don't, I didn't know of like LGBTQ groups, and I feel like after that, I might have seen the establishment of a new one, I don't, I don't know, is there? So if there's a group in East Hampton especially, or maybe North Hampton if we don't have one, but, you know, there's groups I don't know about that aren't on the list.
And I don't know where I read it or saw it, but I want to say, was there not created an LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce recently?
Is that what it was?
Was that in East Hampton?
I wonder if searching would help. Uh, okay, so I'm, but that's a little old. Mass Works to Offer Something. Oh, here we are, LGBT Chamber expands into Western Mass, maybe that's what you're thinking of. That's an org, an article from December seventh. And so, there was a, and this was, it looks like this was, this took place in East Hampton. So that a gathering happened in December. Several East Hampton businesses have joined the chamber, so yes, that's a Chamber of Commerce. So that's another Chamber of Commerce then to keep on our radar. Let's see.
Also, I just, I just Googled organizations in East Hampton, and they gave, I think they're saying that there's, they have a list of a trillion zillion of them. Riverside Industries, you know.
Riverside Industries definitely helps the disabled.
Right.
I love them, they're fabulous.
Oh, I see, they, it's also in, in East, in North Hampton, but in any case. Send this to myself.
I want to be sure to ask about the action steps that my name is attached to, for, in Derek's, you know, action plan, that Rebecca sent out. Because, you know, I did report on this last month, or last, whatever that, that meeting was, but, oh yeah, it was the twenty eighth, that's right, December twenty eighth. But I haven't been able to do anything since because I didn't really have like approval, or we didn't have, you know, we hadn't gotten to the, you know, so can I ask about that now, or should we not? Should we wait? Should we keep going with what we were doing?
Well, so what's our action step, or, or is it maybe in, for a future meeting about the, the list and the script?
If you don't, I don't mind dealing with this now, and if you don't mind my sharing screen, if I can remember how to do it. I, I happen to, let's see.
Oh, I think it's the little button at the bottom that looks like a, says, present now.
It says, present now, okay. I'd like to share a window, and I'd like to share this, okay. So, so Derek Dean's draft action, let's see, it says, I'm, Google is telling me I'm not presenting, but do you see my screen?
Oh, we see it.
You see it?
Yes.
So here, yeah. So some of these have been done, so there's action steps under Action Plan Number One, Foster Through Education, et cetera. So Deb and I had met with city staff about their website, and it says, we'll learn how to navigate it. Now, the mayor said that there's going to have to be changes to make it ADA compliant, so this might be a future thing. We would work with IT, and then, I mean, so we're looking for Emily's name, it's further down that you would identify resources to record and edit videos, so I feel like you reached out to East Hampton Media? Director there? And so, and I think if I remember what you said, that they were agreeable to working with us, and then we, we need to like come up with scripts, right? So that if you were going to interview somebody, maybe you would like to interview Myra, you know, because you were going to interview Deb, but, so, yeah.
Right.
And so it looks like we thought you would come up with a list of people to interview, so that might be something on your. So this is Action Plan One. Then we have Number Two, which is that list of folks. This is the list of the Chamber of Commerce, of, of the LGBT Chamber of Commerce, of the, I don't know whether it would be the religious community, the treehouse community, the, you know, anyway, so that we would develop the list, and then we would identify who would contact which organizations. And so I see initial listings, this is what I was referring to earlier, the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, but there are these other ones, I think these are not within East Hampton, but it's perhaps to, what do they do if we had a concern, you know, how, how is that managed, so that we would know about some of these things. And then we have Action Plan Number Three. And so the first one was about the funds, and so it sounds like, I think Patty did this, that there's $10,000, it's in a bank account, I think we just contact the mayor's office about an expenditure, and then we would reconvene the forum subcommittee. So your name's on that, Emily, the forum subcommittee.
Right, right.
So I think there's two things then with you, which is whether we continue to consider video recordings of, of city leaders, committee leaders.
Right. So, who would I ask to make sure that our webs, the city website has the bandwidth to post short videos about their committees?
I, I want to say, did we not speak with the, I forgot her name?
Right.
Karen Kamahort.
There you go. And then had someone else, and I.
I'd say Karen and/or Noah. Noah is in the IT department.
Okay.
And I'm not sure at the end of that meeting, Emily, if we got to the, to the point where they were agreeable to do that or not.
I know, okay. So that'll be on my list to email them and ask if they can post a video if we just bring it to them, yeah. It might, actually, I suppose it might be a link that they would put on, and then it might go to YouTube and East Hampton Media would just post it.
No, since? Let me say this, so at some point, there was a changeover so that our email is in a Google account, and we're on Google meets, and Google includes YouTube, and it may be that I can put it on YouTube. Because that's part of the Google set of stuff. I, just as an aside, I'd like to mention, I reached out, I reached out to the city clerk, Barbara La Bombard, and to Lindsay, just kind of trying to make sure I, I had a grip on our membership. And Barbara was glad because there were things she needed to update, she needed to check with Lindsay and see that, yes, I've got the written non-renewal from Deb, or whatever. Now, on the CRC page, there's a list of committee members, and there was a screenshot that I'd taken a long time ago with, which is way outdated. So I called that to Barb's, Barbara's attention to take that off because it's got like Mary Lou Spain and people. And so she did, she removed that for me, she suggested that to put a, if we wanted to put a new screen, screenshot on, she might refer that to IT. And Noah then reached out saying, if you need my help putting on a new screenshot, whatever, like, I'm, I'm your guy. So, so at least that communication took place, my sense was that, you know, if we look at our page and we want to adjust the way it looked, Barbara's in charge of like committee membership and what it really is and is not, so we don't get to change that without dealing, reviewing it with her. But I think she plus Noah, they seemed very helpful, so that old screenshot is not there anymore. Someday, when, when we're ready for it, we can get ready for a new one if we'd like to do. I mean, it may be nice to have, you know, smiling faces and people knowing who they're dealing with if they want to reach out to us, I mean, there's a benefit of having this screenshot. And maybe assuming we get our new member on board here at that point in time, or we'll see. But I feel like, you know, I'll take a look at the YouTube that we have, what if I do that and write to you, Emily?
Okay.
To say, you know, I think we can upload it here or not, and, and then that could be pretty easy. I, my sense was that you spoke to the IT department, and maybe their concern was whether they had time to do stuff, that they might be busy. But if it's just something like a link or something like that, that could be easier.
Right, right.
I think, I think there was agreement about putting on a link.
Yeah, and they, they also, I think, Myra, am I right, they, they couldn't deal with doing a how-to.
Right.
For the notify me stuff, and Jeff at East Hampton Media was willing to make that video.
Oh, nice.
And he said, and he was like, do you want to narrate it? You might as well narrate it, you know, it's like, but, and I was like, I think my voice is always nasal, I don't think so, but, 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 we would need to like, really like go through the website and take screen grabs, and those screen grabs, you know, to have in the how-to video, really need to be, you know, the way the webpage, webpage really looks, and if it's going to be changed, I don't think we should go to any trouble right now to, you know.
Yeah, you know, part, interestingly, part of what the mayor was saying, giving us reports, was even giving us information on the website for our comment. But being on the front line of knowing that would be very good, because then we can know where it's at and when it's going to be changed, but, but yeah, I think that before we do a training, we're going to need to know that this is really the way the website's going to be.
Right.
All right, so maybe we'll, we need to follow up, like, what's the timeline for the changes?
Right. So, I probably should say, you know, once, yes, one office that we had thought of in the beginning was a timekeeper, do you remember? And I don't think we ever, except for the chair, well, I mean, if co-chairs don't mind taking that over, but I noticed that it's seven thirty-one. And it may be that, maybe that everybody's tired and wants to go and have their eat.
Right. So, let me just clarify, do you guys want me to contact Karen and Noah about timeline of changes on the website? And could they accept links to go to videos? Do you want me to do that?
Sure. I'll be happy to look at. Yeah, I'll be happy to look at YouTube like tonight, that's fine, and I'll, I'll write you, I'm sorry, Myra, what were you saying?
Nice, and perhaps I can reach out, not sure to whom, but about the, you know, updating the timeline about undoing racism, when they might be taking place.
Okay.
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, great, yeah.
I'd love to know about a follow-up, right? We were promised a follow-up, Margaret.
Yes, I know, I want to have the reunion for starters, and then I go into the next one. I mean, I just think, you know, one of the things, like, we never got to really actually report on our experiences, but what was so wonderful about the one that Rebecca and I attended was a lot of the people, including, you know, people from the police department, there were like, at least two people from the police, three, yeah, two people, that there were people that I think the CRC really wants to work with, and that this really was such a fabulous entree to doing that. And, and going through something together, I think, was really very helpful.
I think that was good, yeah.
Unfortunately missed it, because I had to.
Well, we want.
You had a lot, you had things, yes, but still, I mean, there's going to be more.
We want you to have another opportunity.
Yeah, many.
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, it's, like you said, it's getting late, and I know we're not going to have time to really go over the thing, but I, I want to ask a, a favor, Rebecca, when you, you sort of rattled, and I mean rattle, I don't mean it disrespectfully, you said it very nicely, basically, the reaching out for that script, for reaching out to people, and I'd like to ask if you wouldn't mind, because you, because you just, it just came right out very easily with you, if you wouldn't mind doing a script?
Sure, you mean like to try to write down, this is what I said, and, but we could, we could, it's going to probably be different depending on the organization, we could still play with it, but sure.
Right, right, I mean, you know, we.
Like a template.
They send us a script, and we would modify it.
Right.
Because one of the people, you know, and I know there was a little bit of pushback, but one of those organizations that we didn't mention tonight was also our local police force as well, as, you know, someone to reach out to.
Yes. Well, for when we reach out to them, but also, which is something that we started with, which was how to have the lia, find out who the liaison is from the police department, and say, these are our meetings, if you can attend them, great.
Hey, you know.
Or invite them, whatever.
So how do you feel about this? So how do you feel about this? I don't mind reaching out to the police. I think that the liaison was Dennis Scribner. I think he's now a lieutenant.
He is.
There was a time, and, uh, this is where sometimes life is fuzzy. I, I wanted to reach out to them for, um, oh, I think it was two years ago. Each June, the second Sunday of June each year now is Massachusetts Race Amity Day. But I reached out to the mayor and the chief of police. And the chief of police gave it to Lieutenant Scribner. And they attended a program on that. I was very pleased. And that was, and, and actually, uh, Mr. Scribner wrote and said, if there are important things like that, let me know. So you see, that was a positive experience I had there. So I don't mind, like, I can call and I think what I did even, my approach to getting them is I called and followed up by email, and it's really the email that works. But to, I'd check in and see if, if he is still the liaison and make sure that I'm right, that he's a lieutenant now rather than a sergeant, or are there more promotions? I mean, I don't mind congratulating him on his promotions too. But, um, but just check in. And sure, and like you're saying, Margaret, gee, it would be nice if he would, um, come and attend our meetings. Maybe not every one, but from time to time.
You know, we, we've reached out with invitation. And if there's one person that is the liaison to, to him, in particular, there's a developing relationship.
Oh, and one thing that I didn't do, which is in the correspondence with Derek Dean. Derek Dean would love to do a check-in with us. And he said it could be, it could be the next meeting, it could be February, March, April. But I didn't really ask you all, gee, uh, would you like to invite him to an upcoming meeting? Would you like it to be January 26th? Would you like it to be February, uh, 23rd?
I put in a vote for February, I'd like to see us keep.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I'll contact you Rebecca about our, um, what did we say we would do?
Bylaws, bylaws.
Bylaws, thank you, thank you.
Right.
So, yeah, so I'll reach out to you about that and, um, you know, again.
Great. Great, so great, so then we have so many things to do for, for our next meeting. Rebecca, since you're coming up with a script and you have the list, do you mind, like, maybe updating it for?
Update the list, update the list. And listen, if anybody has.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, organizations that I don't know of, forgot, ignored unintentionally, bring them on.
I mean, I think that's what happens, that's, this is my experience of being on a committee like this, especially when we're not in person and we haven't been in person for almost two years, is that so much information gets lost because it just, one month to the next, or six weeks, or it just, it just evaporates. And we, I have pages and files and notes, I take notes at every meeting and.
Right.
You know, I don't know what's going, you know, it's just kind of sadly. And, uh, so there's something about you reframing that we're going to do most of our work in subcommittees. And the meetings are more, um, it's not where work is done, but things that we do get reviewed and hold on and move on. I mean, just, I think in terms of even having what the cadence of our meetings, when we specially get new members, I mean, the cadence of our meetings is sometimes, I, I mean, I don't know what else we're supposed to do, but for example, spending 30 minutes on the day of the week we're going to meet, I understand how that happened and I understand how it happens. But I don't think that's useful for us, really.
Right.
No, but hopefully that's kind of the beginning of the year thing. We get that kind of at least clarified a little and let's hope that we don't have to do it again.
Well, whenever a new member comes, for example.
Yeah, I know, we have to pray that.
And then, you know, Deb warned us, she said, when new members come, they're going to have their own ideas. And they're going to say, oh, let's do this, and let's do this, and let's, and whatever, and that would be great, but we're all going to be like, you're kidding.
Part of the by, well, part of the bylaw would probably be, I mean, I, I feel like I could be flexible. I mean, normal bylaws wouldn't have this, but we probably want a section on new member onboarding. That, you know, there might be certain materials, even this report from Derek Dean that we want to give them. We want to give them maybe the charter and the blueprint in East Hampton. And, and we might want to say, we are meeting on XYZ day. And we of course, hope they can make it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Myra.
No, that's me, I was going to say, it was very helpful to have that onboarding with, um, with Patty because it kind of broke down a little bit about like action steps, you know, where, where things came from. And so like initially, I thought I was clueless, but then I realized, okay, I just didn't know exactly what had happened, transpired prior to. So it's, I think that's super helpful.
Right.
And then to have like a timeline for when the onboarding will happen, like after a month, before a month into their term, they're to be onboarding.
At this time, we really are trying to move in a certain direction. And like, you know, other people have their own ideas, right? But it's how to incorporate that energy into what's already happening and steering it that way. Because, you know, because I don't think at this time we want to be, um, you know, a, a ship that's lost its course, so to speak.
Probably a valuable question is, depending on the person's interests, what subcommittee, what they want to lend their energy to. And if we are realizing the value of the subcommittees, again, that, that we don't absolutely have to have 100% attendance, but just at least quorums, then hopefully, hopefully we don't have to spend as much time.
I need to go, so what, do we need to, uh?
I think I need, I need to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And then, and the co-chairs can do the roll call vote.
Oh, really? I don't even know how it goes, let's see. So the motion was seconded by someone?
Jan.
All right, by Jan. So, um, uh, please guide me through, I don't.
You know, I think Deb kept a list of people, but I, what I did tonight to say we're here is I just looked who I can see.
I knew it worked for me because I was always after Jan. All right, so, uh, what's the, what we'd like to vote on adjournment? Adjourning, um, Emily Britton?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Okay, Jan Norman?
Yes.
Rebecca Prassa?
Yes.
Margaret Kirsten?
Yes.
All right.
And you yourself.
And Myra Oyedemi, yes.
So that's, that's unanimous.
Unanimous to adjourn the meeting, our next meeting will be January 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emily and Myra, I sent you a.